Okay, we're all set.
I just blanked out. Hello, this is the zoning board meeting, business meeting on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2015. It is about 7:06. And where's my?
It's right underneath here. Nope, underneath.
Oh, right here. Oops, sorry.
There you go.
The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk.
At this meeting.
At this meeting.
Say something different?
Yeah. Anyway.
I'll have to check that.
She's hard.
I know. I was thinking of something else. Sorry about that. So, new business.
Okay, um, first up. Well, first up, so everybody knows Gina and I are meeting with the Finance and Advisory Board this Saturday morning. Just to, for budget present- it's Department Head Budget Presentations. So they'll do smaller departments in the morning, and then they'll do schools and fire and stuff later on. So the revolving account, which was last updated 23. The last entries I have are, was just the deposit for this next hearing we have for April 7th. So let's see. Spent to date on the second page, 256264, and fees taken in is 2650. So we're up a little bit. Next sheet is our postage meter. If you look a minute, the postage meter and the expense spreadsheet right after that, if you put them kind of side by side. So if you look in the middle of the expense sheet under postage, that hundred dollars, and then you look on, that's the hundred dollars we've put in this past year.
There's one above it for 250. Oh, that's way back.
Yeah, that goes back. So yeah, because the postage meter kind of revolves like the revolving fund. So I just keep track of it that way. Right now, our balance is 12213 on the postage meter, and you have to keep fifty dollars in there to keep it open. And at the rate we're doing hearings and mailings, we're gonna be, need to, to add some money to the postage meter maybe next month or the month after. And that's going to have to come out of the revolving account, because if you go to the expense account, expense sheet, we have, after this last WB Mason bill of 11976, in which we got a 4399 credit, which will leave us with forty-eight dollars and two cents. I need to, on the next sheet, you'll see that I got a quote to get. I, business cards I keep clipped to our applications, and people take them, and it has the information, so I need to get some more of those. They gave me, I got the price down to thirty-eight dollars. So that'll take up, if you want me to order them, will take up the rest of what we have for money and supplies. So after that's gone, we'll have to revert to revolving, because the rest of the money left is all going to phone bill. So I saved 390 for phone, for the phone bill for the year. And the phone bill's been going anywhere for the last couple of years, from 367 to, to 387. So, and if it happens, so happens when we hit June, and then if, if we're short at all, Mary would take that out of the revolving account. Otherwise, I would have to reimburse some money.
Where does the fifty-dollar minimum balance plan?
That, that's just something that the tax collectors offer.
So we have to request appropriation for that too, after we're done?
Nope, that, that fifty just kind of stays there.
We have it there.
Yeah, that stays there, and I just make sure we're not getting too close. So it'll be next month or, or May. I think we'd be good until May.
I don't understand. Just, why is the phone bill so high? I thought, like, it was almost free to have, like, inline phone now. Like, that's almost more than a cellphone is.
Actually, that's low when you look at, I, I can send you the, the sheet that I get from Mary, the town accountant.
Yeah.
That lists all, all the town departments and all the phone bills. That's actually on the other side.
I'm not even complaining. I just am surprised that phone bills are that high.
Like a landline cost that much.
And then, see that, like, these little, like, seventy cents, nine cents? Those are separate long distance.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, anyway.
The only reason we would have, we use long distance is if I get a call from, like, Hampshire and I have to call them back.
Yeah.
I try not to do that. I try to wait till they call. Especially if it's a really out of the, you know, someone's calling from California. I'm not, I'm, I'll try to get it, you know, hopefully they leave an email or email me instead.
Crazy. I thought that was free now. I thought, I mean, I thought it was the same price as any other call.
That's the contract we have. Okay, um, do you want me to?
Town?
Um, put those business cards on the next warrant, warrant invoice for next month?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Patty?
Minutes? Yes, sorry.
Um, just real quick, add fax number.
Yeah, she said I could add that free.
Oh, free, alright, thank you.
Yes, because it was missing.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so minutes, so I need two motions, because we had Sharon was not, was recused from East Main Street, 64 East Main Street. And, um, so I need a motion to approve 23415 for 34 East Main Street and the business minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the business minutes from 2315.
And 34 East Main?
And 34 East Main, thank you.
Second?
All those in, oh, you do it, sorry, honey.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of 2315 for 6474 East Main Street.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah.
You can't do aye.
I didn't.
I did. No, Sharon's, oh, Sharon's, yeah.
Recused.
I was throwing my voice.
Now, so a third motion for the email accounts?
No, this is just, this is, I pulled this, pulled this out, it stapled, did I stick it in there after?
Oh, it's just his.
Oh, official email account.
I put the new business in the wrong space. Should have been in front. Sorry about that. Okay, this is the email from Janet Pantano, so. See the attached memo and email policy from Mike Farrell, Town Administrator. So I'll, and I sent this to everybody, um, so our boards and committees now have a town email address. Um, I went and checked in the global address list, and Sean was missing, so I let Janet know. She'll let IT know, and they need to add Sean. Um, but you're all there, so this is, and I sent this out. It, they, they wanted to start by March 16th.
They could have.
To do what now?
This is, you're gonna have another email. You're gonna have a town email that you're gonna use for, just for town, just for town.
Something else to notify.
Will your emails be going to that one then?
Mm-hmm. So that's actually a good thing, so then you can log in.
Okay, great.
So you can log in from home.
Excellent.
So you gotta, you just gotta go in and, and it explains how to, how to go in and log in. It's a little funky, it's, it's Outlook, but it's like, when I log in, it's, it's just set up really different. So just play with it a little bit, because it's.
Where are you gonna let us know that it's online and all that stuff?
You're there.
Oh, I'm already on, okay.
You guys are all set. Sean's not hooked up yet, for some reason. So, um, follow these directions, and then there's an electronic acceptable use policy, and I need you to.
We have to sign off by, we have to return a sign-off sheet, right?
One year, I'm kidding.
No, this wasn't.
It was approved in August or something.
August 25th, 24th.
Yeah.
Second or third?
So you have a little paper to sign. You want all of us to sign notes?
Wait a minute. I'm sorry, please.
Paul, you only had to sign it after we, after we come to the meeting.
Write our name on it.
Is it supposed to be February?
Uh, not a bad idea.
Or is it supposed to be August?
We don't have a sheet.
It was mid-March.
So I won't be getting emails from you anymore on my regular email account?
Did I stick an extra, did I stick an extra page?
Should I put my name on it, actually?
Losing my mind. Mine's not here, because I signed it. So yes.
It's gonna go one big pile for all the town boards, right?
I guess I should put my name on it.
So yeah, you need to sign that.
And handprint as well.
Like, when are you gonna start sending stuff via that, Patty?
Not until after March 16th. I'll make sure that everybody.
We have to open our accounts first.
Yes. Well, you have to just log in and get set up, get a password.
Two?
I need four.
We did two?
No, one's from Paul.
Paul?
Me and Hillary Clinton can't use, like, personal email anymore.
I know. What was she thinking?
She wasn't logged until after she was out of office, out of office. It's just a bunch of, anyway.
Okay, next.
Get me started.
Jeff and Charles. Correspondence, building correspondence. I have this letter from John from January 29th. This was just, actually, this, this is for planning. It's, it's regarding these lots. These are lots behind Trulane. Remember the, uh, sell-in monopole thing with the balloons we did way back when, Paul? It's that land, so he's just letting him know, um, what he can and can't do on that lot. So that's not anything that's coming to us. Um.
Balloons?
I did not put the denial in here for the next hearing, because you're gonna get that in the packet. Um, under general.
Can I ask a question on, for, for those other lots, is there a way that they could turn one lot into two or anything like that?
They, he went to planning with, um, I know he went to planning with, um, proposal. I haven't seen it.
Okay.
Um, I haven't read this in a while, so.
Well, he, one of them meets it, and the other three don't, but I'm just curious if, if he were to combine. I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see them.
I don't, I don't know what he, I don't, not sure what he did with planning already.
Okay.
But I know that it's, it's wet out there, because it.
Oh, is it conservation?
Were you here when we did the sidewalk for that?
No, I didn't do a sidewalk, no.
It was just Paul.
Is it wetlands?
Yeah, it goes way before you get to Trulane, there's a little, um, sign. And there's a, an old, I guess they call it an old fire road.
Oh, it's a path, yep.
It's a path, and it says Department of Environmental Management. And it, that's the, the road that no one knew who owned at one time. So, and it goes right behind Trulane, all the way down into the back. Kind of looks like it's landlocked if you couldn't use that. So I, I guess he went to planning and, and got a, I don't know if this is an OSID, or if it's a regular subdivision, I'm not sure. As of right now, you can only put one lot.
It's not endorsed.
Yeah, no.
By planning, so.
This was just informational from.
Oh, so if it is, yes.
I know what this is. I'm sorry, this was the constructive thing.
Yes, yes, yes. I believe that's currently in litigation.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay. So that was just, I had this in this, in if-oh, and that's, I forget that it's from January 29th, so maybe that went after. Okay, um, then we have a letter from Historical Commission. And they're actually, let me just read this. He's letting you know about the six-month demolition delay. This is in regard to 34 East Main Street. Mr. Olson pulled the demolition permit the very next day. They're having a meeting, um, I was gonna send you on an email, on March 18th in the basement, if anybody wanted to go.
Is that the public meeting for the demo?
It's to, it's, let me just try and remember what the, um, it was either to. Nation of, yeah, whether, of historical significance, whether it's worth preserving or not. Harry's got it. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you. So it's, um, March 18th, and I'm gonna send you an email on that, because I talked to.
But then only by six months, right?
Six months, six months. You can't do anything with it for six months.
Is the permanent application for the entire, for the building and the garage in the L, or just?
Everything.
Everything, okay.
And that's, if you look at the application, it's underneath it.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah. It doesn't really specify, but it, we checked, and it was for everything.
So on March 18th, they would make a determination if it was significant, if it was, then he'd have, they'd have to wait six months.
He can come back here any ti- he can come back here now if he wanted to.
Demolition, to demolition.
But as far as demolishing.
Six months from the date he files the application.
Yeah.
Oh, so what's the significance of the March 18th?
That, I, I guess it's a procedure they do to, to determine, is it worth saving?
So the six months would start on the March 18th?
March 18th is just the date they're meeting.
Or does it start from the day he filed the application?
I'm just curious, I'm trying to understand.
Sure.
It appear to be a date on the application anyway.
In here.
No date on here. It wasn't stamped or anything.
Huh.
It had to have been, uh, probably February 5th, yeah, because this is, this letter's dated the 6th for John Mativia.
Yeah, the, uh, hearing was the 3rd.
Yeah, he filed it.
So you're looking demolition here, okay.
Yeah, the next morning. I'm looking at the demo delay in here.
I can look it up. You can keep going. I'll find it.
Okay. But Ed did, did say if anybody wanted to attend, and I'll, I'll send you out a reminder.
When is that again? March 18th?
March 18th, um, I think it's 7:07 in the basement. I have it in draft, and I have a reminder to send it in.
Alright, so, Noonan's?
The next one is a, finally, Noonan's is, this is from Howard. It's a site plan approval application. So they're going to what we originally gave them, the many-golf use. And that's gonna be March 25th, and Howard wants comments back March 18th. But basically, what I did was I gave him the decision, is what he needs. And if he has any other questions, um, because we had put conditions on that decision, I'm sure he'll ask me. That was from our May 14th, 13th was the date of the decision. Last item is just, um, an update from Steve Pajemski, the conservation agent on West Street. Just letting us know that, um, DEP has determined that the site is clean. So they met last Thursday, um, so.
Huh?
No, it's, it's, the applicant with, had to withdraw and refile, because this has been going on since, I mean, I was, I was zoning.
It says 13 years.
2001.
It says 13 years.
13 years, so, um, I actually filed that decision.
So the site is clean.
There's a, there's only, I think the only person on the board is Carl. That's, was on the board back then, and he's the chairman. So they have to withdraw and refile, because there's a completely different board, and I, I think that has something to do with it. And then.
Is, is the fact that they withdrew, um, does that have any?
No, it won't affect the 40B permit still in place. It's, we go back to that, that question with, um, when it was questioned back in 2007. When they started doing testing, the park testing, and, um, that was considered by town council to be commencement of construction. So the permit is still valid. So now they're at number, I have the decision, like, on my desktop, so now I'm, I sent to Steve Pajemski and the building inspector. Okay, they finished with this letter of credit that we released. So next is the water treatment plant that they have to, that comes next. And there's another letter of credit that has to be given to us for that, to make sure that if for some reason they start it and don't finish it, or whatever, we have that money, so when they refile this, I have it on my calendar to make sure we get that, um, letter of credit. I think it's, I wanna say it's, I don't know if it's another hundred thousand, or if it's less than that. Don't remember. Off the top of my head. Okay, um, I don't have any items. Under five, I do just have the, um, new application for the next meeting. You can take one, pass it down. I mailed, um, Justin Sean's to them knowing that they wouldn't be kicked. Did you find that demolition delay by?
I don't see it in here. May, I remember seeing it, but maybe it was a bylaw I read. Maybe it's not in here.
It could be that this, oh, when was it done? This is 2011.
I think what I remember is when they filed it, if it sounds.
Special.
I can look, I, I can look it up and let you know.
It would make sense to me that it's starting March 18th, because they have to determine.
So you wanna know when it's, when the six months begin?
Because it's, if it's not really, then.
I think it's from the date he filed.
I thought it was, I thought it was the, that he actually filed, putting the application.
I don't know what the hearing would be for.
The application for John.
You have to do a public hearing.
You talking about Dave?
What's that?
You mean the date, the application, John's application.
I thought we're talking about, uh, demo, yeah.
Yeah.
He'll know it.
Alan filed it. Yeah, I'll request it. I think it's from that date.
He'll tell you.
Because, yeah, he called me to let me know what was going on.
Okay.
Date, um. Am I allowed to do that, email exactly?
Okay. You can just ask him, explain.
Okay.
The hearing and the dates that you would like to know.
Okay.
Okay.
No, there's, there's no open case.
I'm good.
We done with the business? Do we need to close it?
Uh, yes, motion to close.
I'd like to make a motion to close a business meeting on, um, 3315.
A second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned?
Nope.
Nope.
Business meeting?
Yes.
Alright. Hello. So I'd like to open this by the legal ad. Will you please read the court decree? Sir?
A public hearing will be held on March 3rd, 2015, at the Georgetown Town Hall, 3rd floor meeting room at 7:30. An application has been filed by Giambro, Seambro?
Chinbro.
Chinbro.
Chinbro. Uh, Fabrication and Coding Corporation care of Mr. Richard Breschia? Breschia, Breschia?
Breschia, correct.
Breschia, located at 3 Farm Lane, Georgetown, Mass. 01833. The applicant has filed this appeal as a party aggrieved by the determination of the building inspector by a letter dated 2/114, in which the building inspector has instructed the applicant to file for a modification of a site plan approval. Since not all of the conditions were met, the site plan approval was approved by the planning board on April of 1999 at the property located 3 Farm Lane, MAP 20, Lot 68C, in the IB zone. The applicant is also citing an issue with a previous occupancy permit from August of 2000 and statute of limitations, Mass. General Law 40A, Section 7. The applicant is appealing this determination to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Has anyone aggrieved by the determination of the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer? Has the right to appeal through, uh, through the zoning board? This appeal is pursuant on to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 7, 8, 15, and 17, and the Georgetown Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 165, Section 98. The 1999 site approval decision issued was pursuant to Georgetown Bylaw, Chapter 165, 83D, 6, I don't know why, 6, uh, site plan approval. I don't know what the 6 is.
Okay. Um, just wanna introduce the board. Sharon Freeman, Paul Schillen, Dave Kapnis. I'm Gina Tebow, and Patty's our clerk. Do we want to read this first, or?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, why don't you read that?
You're off the hook. You're too far away. Good.
Ms. Gina Tebow, Chairperson, Zoning Board of Appeals, 1 Larbury Street, Georgetown, Mass. 01833. Regarding Giambro Fabrication and Coding Corporation, 3 Farm Lane, Georgetown. Appeal of decision of Building Inspector, ZBA File Number 15-07. The hearing date of 3/3/2015. Dear Chairperson Tebow, I understand that there will only be four ZBA, ZBA members available for tonight's hearing. Since one of the regular members and also the associate member are not able to attend, this request is in no way to be construed as a reflection of the remaining four members, but my client would prefer the matter be continued to 4/7/15. Since a vote of four members is required to reverse John's decision, my client wants the appeal to be heard by a full five-member panel in order to avoid the necessity of obtaining a unanimous vote. Thank you for your consideration, very truly yours, Matthew Mitchell E. Kroner. Common copy, Gina Tebow, Building Inspector, applicant.
Yes, so Attorney Mitchell Kroner appearing for the applicant, and, uh, I know it's always awkward to ask for these continuances, so I'll repeat what I put in the letter. This is no reflection on the foreview, it's just the, uh, the clients, two of them are coming down from Portland, Maine, and they just preferred, when we have the hearing, it be in front of the full board.
Understood.
And that's the long and short of it, so we're requesting continuance, uh, for that reason.
Okay.
Still doing the motion to grant?
Yep.
I have a motion to continue through April 7th.
Got papers everywhere.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing for 3 Farm Lane, ZBA File 15-07 to April 7th, 2015, immediately following the first scheduled hearing beginning at 7:30.
And the other thing is I filed this beginning of January, so in terms of the clock ticking, whatever you need me to sign.
I have an extension time right here.
And we ask that you sign an extension of time.
Yes.
And I just need a, a second.
So whatever date the board pleases, I will.
So that's gonna be the second hearing, so we have 24-hour Penbrook, which is gonna start at 7:30. It will not be, I don't, I don't see it being a, a long hearing. It's a modification of a previous decision.
Okay.
It's, it's, I don't see it taking very long, but I would still be here at, anybody who is watching, or I would still be here at 7:30 in case that goes really fast, or they change it or something. Because it'll be immediately following, and if you wanna sign, I wanna do an extension of time, and I put June 2nd.
That's fine, whatever, whatever.
Because it's in a, it's an appeal of John's decision, and it's not, it's not really a special permit, it's not really a variance, so just to cover us, you wanna extend the time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so it carries.
And I'll have you sign that.
Do we wanna ask these two gentlemen to sign in, because I'm guessing you're both here for the 3 Farm Lane meeting? Do we want them to sign in, so we can?
Yes. Here, names and addresses.
Okay, thank you.
It's gonna be on the second floor also.
Okay.
Okay, just so, you know, we, we got bumped by Mr. Lacatelia. Mister Lacatelia.
Just say, he just left.
I know, he's gone, crap. Um, so it'll be on the second floor.
Okay.
Okay, and Gina, you need to sign under Mitch, and then I'll have that stamped by the town book, like I did with the continuance letter, and I'll, um, email that to you.
Okay. Alright. Okay, great, great.
Okay.
All set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We don't close, we
So, you just need to adjourn.
We need a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
No, 'cause it's not a decision.
You're just adjourning tonight.
Oh, so we don't need a motion?
No, you didn't, you didn't
We're gonna allow them to speak.
No, they're just
You're not opening it, you didn't, we're opening and continuing.
Oh, okay. Alright, that's even better.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So
So we can adjourn.
Okay, I guess we'll adjourn?
Yeah, that sounds great, let's do that.
Want us to adjourn?
Motion?
Do adjourn?
Second?
Approved.
Dave, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Christine, thank you.
Bye, Mitch.
Bye-bye.